Mark? Yes, we are. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I am, A, adopt the tentative millage rates, the tentative facilities work program and the tentative 2018-2019 budget. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. The tentative millage rate for required local effort is 4.0900 mils. What should...
Skip just a second there.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. All right. Okay, I will, I'm gonna go back. Let me read back what I just said. This is an advertised public hearing. Public notice of this hearing appeared in the Citrus County Chronicle on July 28, 2018. Now, back to our left. The tentative millage rate for required local effort is 4.0900 mils, which includes .0110 mils for prior period adjustment, and is a decrease of 1.68 percent over the rollback rate. The tentative millage rate for discretionary is 2.2480 mils, which includes capital outlay. The total tentative millage rate is 6.3380 mils, and is an increase of .32 percent over the rollback rate. The tentative budget totals $227,333,972. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as to the millage levy or any item within the budget? Okay, there were no, no one addressed the board. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.0900 mils, which includes .0110 mils for prior period adjustment for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.0900 mils for operating purposes.
I second the motion.
Mr. Kennedy moved, and Ms. Powers seconded the motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.0900 mils for operating, for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate at .7480 mils for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate at .7480 mils for operating purposes.
Second.
Ms. Bryant has moved, and Mr. Kennedy has seconded the motion to adopt the tentative local discretionary millage rate at .7480 mils for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.5000 mils for capital outlay purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.5 mils for capital outlay purposes.
Okay, Mrs. Powers has moved, and Mrs. Kells has seconded the motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.5000 mils for capital outlay purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. These millage rates represent a total millage rate of 6.3380 mils. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate?
I move to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Can I second the motion?
Okay, Mrs. Kells has moved, and Mrs. Bryant has seconded the motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting, adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2018-2019. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 1011 Florida statutes approve tentative millage rates for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And whereas at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates and the amounts of required local effort, tentative millage levy 4.0900. Proposed amount to be raised $39,221,65. Basic discretionary tentative millage levy 0.7480. Proposed amount to be raised $7,172,948. Capital outlay tentative millage levy 1.5000. Proposed amount to be raised $14,384,254. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate by point, excuse me, by 0.32 percent. Now therefore be resolved that the School Board of Citrus County adopted each tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, on July 31, 2018, by separate vote prior to adopting the tentative budget.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year in the amount of $227,333,972?
I move to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year in the amount of $227,333,972.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Powers has moved, and Mrs. Kells has seconded the motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year in the amount of $227,333,972. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
I second the motion.
All right, Ms. Bryant has moved, and Mr. Kennedy has seconded the motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 1011 Florida statutes approve tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. And whereas at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates and the budget in the amount of $227,333,972 for fiscal year 2018-2019. Now therefore be resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County including, including the millage rates as set forth therein is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as a tentative budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted?
I move to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted.
Second.
All right, Mr. Kennedy has moved, and Ms. Kells has seconded the motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Okay, a final budget hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, September 11, 2018, at 5:30 PM at the Citrus County School Board District Service Center located at 1007 West Main Street on State Road 44 in Brenes, Florida. And Ms. Himmel, I just want to confirm that it's Tuesday, correct, on the 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the case of, does it reflect that too, Doug, does it reflect it?
Uh, well...
It's not advertised in the newspaper yet.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because it had said Monday, but it is Tuesday, right?
I apologize.
No.
This is just in the script.
I just want to make sure, yeah, I just want to make sure it wasn't, it wasn't Monday to Tuesday.
That was Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, so everything is...
We have to have it approved by September 11, so we're good.
We're good on, and that is a regular scheduled meeting as well for the, for the School Board. Okay. All right, so we're all clear on that? Okay, this public hearing is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The way you said decrease.
That's right.
Decrease. I like that.
I nearly threw her a film that said you arrived early.
That's right.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the workshop, um, open our workshop, and we have four topics here for discussion. We'll start with education technology.
Good afternoon again. Our new educational technology department was formed initially as a result of Dr. Geddes' retirement, gave us an opportunity to look at our structure, determine how we thought things might work efficiently for the school district. I believe we have three advantages by combining the departments. One, one is we have more seamless staff teams as far as working on projects when having to work across two departments. We also have better administrative coverage, having two administrators within the same department, we can cover for each other. And a big item is it allows us to have more administrative focus on classroom technology through our new coordinator of educational technology, Kathy Androwski. So, I think you all have a list of the responsibilities under the coordinator and director's roles currently. Coordinator, part of that is coordinating the district instructional technology staff and also the Skybridge student support staff. That was important to combine that together because the Skybridge information feeds into the great book that the teachers use, so it all kind of ties into the classroom. Whereas the director is more the infrastructure technology with the network server staff and desktop support. Any questions?
I'm just glad, I know this was kind of, it's, it's a lot coming together, so I'm, I'm glad you're doing this, and it doesn't mean that maybe in, you know, in a period of time, you may not say, listen, we've reevaluated, we may need to do some more restructuring, but I think you're going in the right direction. The only thing I would just continue to say is the technology support at the, each individual schools, um, I'm still not sure that that doesn't need to somehow come under you all at some point, or at least be looked at, because just like we have nurses at the schools and that they fall under student services and the nursing department, even though that they're a part of that school, they're also, so many of the, the infrastructural needs actually come from a district incentive down. So, I'm certainly open that if later you see the need for that, that's, you know, something that is still, I think, worth of conversation and, and observation, but I think these are good changes you guys are making.
And now your assignments, um, you are, your office is gonna be at the district media center.
Yes, sir.
Where Dr. Geddes', are you in the same office now that Dr. Geddes' was in?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And Ms. Androwski's assigned area is gonna be here in the district office.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you are the supervisor for the coordinator, and you're also a direct supervisor of your staff at the TRC.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is it, that, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, on those individuals at the TRC, how is that management structure worked out? You have, you have two supervisors or three, or how, how does that, how many people do you directly supervise?
Well, we have a project leader for support that manages the desktop support group, desktop and laptop computers, and then we also have a project leader network that helps directly supervise, work with managing the work of the network and server systems staff.
So, there's two individuals that fall directly under you, so you're not supervising other individuals outside of those two?
Well, those two provide the day-to-day support for the individuals in this. And then also the coordinator.
Right. And so, if you are absent, obviously the coordinator is, is in charge of the, of the division or the, the, what do we call this, this department?
Is that right?
So, and when Ms. Androwski is not here, is there someone in her side of the shop that will answer, they'll go to, or will all those people go to you?
There is a, a position of senior application supporting animals that helps manage the day-to-day activity of the Skybridge student support group at the district. So, that's about half of the staff that reports to the coordinator, and then the other people who are direct to the coordinator, the instructional technology staff.
Okay. The school websites, and I know we have purchased a program or a, we've, we've purchased kind of a way to keep those consistent, is that right, Mr. Mullin?
Yeah, you wanna talk about that? Yes, sir. We've entered into an agreement with School Messenger, who is a major provider of web presence for school districts, and we're working through the process now to, to come up in their templates. We are projecting around the third week of August right now. We're trying to get them placed as soon as possible.
Okay. So, one of the things that I, I would hope for is just like this other system with passwords where you can get on your, your personal device.
Yes, sir.
To do things. I would like, I hope those websites, a lot of websites, I, when I have to get on my phone, uh, obviously to check a school's website for a piece of information, sometimes I can't read the information, it's cut off. It's not, you know, I, I'm hoping that this program is gonna help take care of that.
Yes, sir, it definitely has a few advantages. One is it should take care of that, it should help us comply with ADA requirements. It also is supposed to be easily managed by users within the schools and departments that can just drag and drop their information, they don't have to have technical knowledge to manage the information in their website. And then also another additional part of the contract is for us to have a district app for the phones. So, that'll be another method of accessing information.
Which is a first of help that you're talking about.
Yeah, the platforms that we currently have, even the district one, was very complicated, complex.
Right.
It was built in various stages, and it made it very complex to update it or even to access it from different devices. So, hopefully we can hear all that.
Right.
Do we put the information on a device, or something, or does it go through somebody else?
Every school will have their own designated person that'll put, that'll be up to the principal, and the district will have a designated person as well.
So, you wouldn't have 15,000 people to put that?
But I think there's a hierarchy, that it allows you to be able to assign levels of controls so that your control and say Kathy's control, let's say that's at the administrative level, but then you could have an editor level and you could have, so that you could say, okay, this person is our school's person, but all they can do is very limited things, and that's really the controls that I think we've all been hoping so that we could control that there is, we're getting information that needs to get out to the, to the families and to the stakeholders, but we're also controlling that.
Well, I remember on the SAT committee on my first year on the board, I mean, one of the issues that they talked about was the website for communicating with parents, and honestly, I don't, what I've seen from the Citrus High website, it hasn't improved. I mean, you know, I still can't get schedules on there, I mean, you know, I gotta do all kinds of different methods to get things, and it's, to me, and that's on all the school websites, I'm not saying that, but there are some that are, just look so basic, I mean, I, it's like, I wonder who built that website? And it's kind of not something I'm real proud of. So, for, as a parent, when I wanna know about an event, an awards ceremony, I'll go on the school's website and pull it up and see what's there to get the information. I mean, I have, coming home for my child, but, you know, so I do think we gotta communicate better on the website issue, and I guess that's, would be under Ms. Androwski's, that's her, part of her assignment is the web and social media presence.
But, and I agree with you, but Mr. Dodd, one thing I just think we have to as a board be willing is you, we were talking about staffing. We had a full-time person whose job was, well, I agree with you, by the way, about some of the information you just said, they still were a designated individual that did all that. We're now adding that back to our district, but we're not, we haven't added another person, and we had a, we were paying the equivalent of a full-time person that went around not just and did photos, but also updated information.
You mean in Mr. Gangler's?
In, in Mr. Gangler's. So, while those door duties right now are Mr. Chamberlain's department and I think Mr. Hebert's department are absorbing those, we go back to the concerns we had earlier about, we, we haven't added staff to that, and that's, we, I agree with you, we need to have the calendar updated, but the calendar to get updated doesn't just happen, somebody's gotta do that. So, those are pieces we're gonna have to be willing to say, who's gonna do that, and do we have personnel to do it? That's a struggle that we're always having, I think, and the school levels, they don't have somebody either.
And Ms. Himmel's instructed us to bring some job descriptions to her from other counties that have someone that does that, so we're, we are trying to address that issue.
And, and it may be that maybe we again look at that that's a hybrid of, maybe they're a, a public informations officer slash, you know, web communicator type situation. Yeah, I mean, something that, that integrates that, because we're, we're losing somebody, and I, I agree, I mean, it's frustrating as a parent where you're looking for that information, and, and I know just because Mr. Hebert's been in that role, you, you're sitting there, he's even trying to say, okay, where, did we get that information out and who's doing that? And I think Mr. Chamberlain probably can tell us, we don't have one calendar that an Outlook integrates to, let's say, the website, or even at each school, depending on the administrator and who uses that calendar, who updates it, you can't depend on that calendar, or the district calendar is a single calendar, and that's a, that's maybe another conversation of things, but calendar of events is, is something that we, we need to look at.
Yeah, School Messenger does have a feature where you have a calendar that each school can manage your own calendar, a parent can go in and choose to look at a calendar that includes certain schools. If you have children at two different schools, you can look at a calendar that just includes those three sites in what you see. So, it does have a nice calendar feature and some flexibility.
Does it integrate, do you know, with the Outlooks? Because I know that's what the schools are using.
Right, no, I believe it's gonna be a separate function.
So, that's the piece, though, that, that what we found in the past is somebody's double entering, and what I've found is either somebody's doing the one but not doing the other, or they think everybody's using the one, because a lot of times the schools are using the Outlook calendar, thinking it's gonna magically get onto the thing. So, that, I don't know if that is a plug-in that could be looked at, but that may be something to, you know, the piece, 'cause...
And it's because they enter the calendar at the start of the year, it's not this, I mean, if there's changes in calendars, somebody's gonna change it. I, I, as a board member, have gone into calendar to see, oh, there's something on here, and then, oh, that got changed, you know, but nobody changed it on there, you know, and so, that's something too that I, I mean, someone has to be able to have the, the, or has to have the accountability to say, okay, you're gonna be in charge of the calendar, or if you change this, whatever the event is, you gotta change it on the calendar, you know, and that's, again, it's all part of communicating with our parents and with the public, see information out there. I've never built a website, so I don't know what it involves, but I've seen some excellent websites, and I, I don't know, you know, at what, the level of work, I guess, what it takes to have an excellent website, but...
The products that they're talking about, what is good about it is, one, the hope is when you have a link that goes to the student, the code of student conduct, it's the same, it's the same end file that everybody at every school has, so that you're not having to duplicate that in hope that you had to update 23 different schools to have that. And so, that manpower hopefully gets reduced, because that can be done at the high, at a higher level, and then it all flows and, and does that, so it's correct everywhere. That's part of the problem right now, is every school's been independently, you know, programmed and managed, and it may or may not link back, broken links and other things like that then ultimately usually come up as part of your inter, your interfacing. And that's, my hope is that that's gonna save us some time, if not heartache.
A pretty much easier system to manage, but there obviously has to be accountability.
Okay. The other question I had for you, it deals with the bring your own device. I noticed Citrus High School on the website yesterday when I was looking for a schedule that it was kind of a process to get there, but, you know, it, it bragged on the, the opening page about all the laptops and, and, you know, how the ability is to bring your own device to have wireless access. But yet that's not always the case. With students being able to use, I, I know they, they limit that. So, you know, my question is, when I look at that as a parent, I think, oh, gosh, they have access to, you know, but that wasn't the case for my daughters, that, I mean, they couldn't get on with their, their phones, you know, and so, I know in Evans Middle School, there's times that it's, they're allowed to and not to, and so, my question is, how are we managing that? You know, are we telling people we have all this internet access that, I think that group of students that we had from Leadership Citrus, and Mr. Mullin, you were here that day when they came in, that was one of their biggest complaints, was that their ability to get on the internet and to have a internet stream that's, they can stay on it and get data, even with their, their iPads, you remember, they, they talked about, well, they can't even access some things because not everybody can get on there. So, are we doing a better job there, and bring your own device, is that...
Do you wanna address that? Because we, we do have limitations.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, every kid in the school wants to stream a CD, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
I mean, you know, so it depends on what they're accessing and, and those kind of things. So, there are limitations. We just can't provide everybody unlimited amount of data.
Oh, I know.
So, you wanna address that?
Yes, Mr. Dodd, so last year, some changes were made to the bring your own device network due to limited bandwidth. So, the students were streaming, and that was reducing the ability for academic needs, testing and so forth to happen. And since the majority of the secondary students have an iPad, it was felt that they could use their iPad for academic purposes on campus. The BYOD was typically used for their, their own phone, or some students I know did bring in a laptop, and if there was a unique situation, the techs could ask for a student to have access for their particular device. That was one, one element. The other thing was we were just having a large number of students bringing their own device in that were putting programs on their device that was allowing them to bypass the filter. So, it was twofold, and so, the easiest way to manage that, to make sure it wasn't affecting the bandwidth, and also to make sure that they were not bypassing the, the filter, was to turn off the BYOD.
Ms. Androwski, one thing, and I was looking at Mr. Bradshaw's left forearm, but here's the interesting thing, if I recall, about that, and I brought this up during committee meetings. If they do it on our device, on our network, there's no question that we have authority over them for disciplinary action. If they do it on their phone on our network, or their device on our network, it's a clear, they, they violated, they violated. If they do it, and we're not aware of it, which is what happens, and they're on their own network or on a cellular network, is what I mean by that, it's very hard for us to either know it's happening, know it's a problem, address the problem, we can't do that. And I say that because young people aren't always good at thinking things through, and there are, not that I'm suggesting that we're trying to trap them, but it does become an easier way for that problem to sometimes get identified if it, if all of a sudden they do it on our network. And I'm not, again, I'm not saying that I, I want that, but it does become easier for us to discipline if they do it on our network.
If we have the staff to monitor that.
Well, I was thinking, though, that some of these, they pop up and they, they actually send an email and send, and to the assistant, I mean, to the assistant principal, and it says, somebody has gone to an inappropriate site. I'm not suggesting we have monitors everywhere and do that, I'm talking about something that is...
Notification.
That, yeah, that it's a notification, this IP does that, and, and then they know that. So, I agree with you, we don't have staff to run around 100 percent. But if, the other question is, is in controls of BYOD, one of the things that, that, and maybe it's Mr. Chamberlain, I thought we had parameters where we could, for example, streaming, which is a serious data gobbler, that we could turn down, for example, those types of things, and, but permit, for example, let's say that we wanted regular HTML or regular communication to go through for, let's call it educational purposes, but where they don't need to be streaming their music, which is what is really where, where we, it, it causes the backlog, so that you could say, okay, BYOD, you wanna stream it, it's only gonna go at so many small bits on that particular part of it, so you're not gonna, you know, you can get on it all you want, but you're not gonna be able to stream, and that kind of self-fixes some of that, that data, you know, hogging that, that is taking place. Is that something that we either can do or...
I believe we do have a rule to follow.
I believe we do have a rule to throwback certain types of activities.
Wrong, that was the word.
I don't know the details of it yet, but I know we used to do that and I'm sure we still do that.
Because, because I'm with Mr. Dodd, that's been a, an issue that I see is we have, we, we have policies and I think expectations of saying, we're permitting BYOD. Up until this year, we haven't had devices for all the students. So there's been sometimes at the high school level in particular inconsistency to say, well, down off the students had a device, so you wanted to be able to have them have that type of communications they couldn't. This may be something that self addresses by the fact that every one of them has a device and any communications they should be doing should be then done on that device. But there are parents that say, I wanna be able to communicate with my kid. And if you're in La Canto High School, you can't use a cellular phone because you're in a hole. And I don't know if, if Citrus is the same way, but, you know, that's, Kirsten Ricker, by the way, has excellent LTV. So I kid you not, most of the kids that I've talked to there will say that we're not worried about getting on the network because we have a great cell tower nearby. But La Canto is where I hear all the, one of the, the big concerns, because there's no signal down there.
Let me add something to that as well. One issue that many of the students were finding is that they would put something on the device that was bypassing the filter. And then Lance had instituted the ability to detect that and it would basically not allow them to use the network.
Right.
So then they would complain, my phone's not working. And when you talk manpower, it's a lot of manpower to determine, well, why is your phone not working? And then when you're going, well, can I see your phone? Can I look and try to figure it out? Well, it's because you have something on there that's bypassing the filter. So some, more and more they were putting ways to bypass the filter, to stream, to listen to their music, to basically do what they wanted for the non-academic purposes. And that was becoming challenging for the schools to handle and address and to, you know, to keep them safe, but also not interfere with the academic processes that need to happen. And I want to say also with technology, you mentioned that the students were talking about not being able to connect even with the iPad. Well, we instituted something that was great, but also had some ramifications that we didn't expect. We put in place in many of the schools, but I know the high schools in particular, some stronger access points. And so what would happen was when they were so strong, that when the student would go from one part of school to the next, it would not release, it was still talking to the access point that was on another floor or across campus. And so the signal, although it was connected, was a very, very weak one. And so then it didn't operate correctly. So it's been about educating the students and the teachers, okay, this is how to fix that. That's one aspect. And then I do know, and I don't know, Mr. Chamberlain, if you can speak to this, but I know that Lance has also been working on another method to, to rectify that issue this summer in the schools.
If I put a, in order for me, like, I can go from school to school on my site and it's on the network when I allow it to be, because there's a profile in here.
See, I don't have that.
It, you can ask, they'll, they'll do it. But in order to do that, I give up privacy. Because when I do that, you have access to any of my traffic, if I recall, or you can control my traffic. I don't know that I can put a bypass app on there to bypass the profile. And my question is, that to me was a question to say, if you can do that, you can.
Just ask a student.
But you have on iOS, can you?
Yeah. It was becoming challenging keeping up with all of the new ones they had.
Yeah, no, I didn't think you could with the profile.
And then they would find another one.
Yeah.
You know, I guess the thing that, that kind of bothers me a little bit is that, why are we telling everyone we have all this great, be, bring your own device, i- if we're not real, we don't really? So I'd rather just see them get rid of all that and, and not, not say, not try to mislead people or not, I don't want to see them mislead, but you know, not try to say we're doing something that we're really not doing. Because I don't, what I've seen is it's not very often that they're able to use their own devices. And if they all, if they have all, if everyone has an iPad.
I think that's where it was. It was a bridge to get us till we had one-to-one.
Right.
Of, and when I say that, I'm talking about having them use their device on our network.
Right, yeah.
Now that really all the secondary world, I think that we are technically, come next week, or when the kids come back, we should be one-to-one at the secondary level. Is that correct? I mean, in theory. I'm not saying they're all gonna be distributed.
Correct.
They want, but, but they will be one-to-one. That to me becomes easier to have a conversation about removing the network BYOD. That's a different conversation, I would just say though, than, than devices of, with students. I haven't, I, I was always reluctant to do that if we didn't have the devices available to the students because that limited potential educational use of, of that. But if we've, if we've met that device, then it may be a moot point.
I think there's still probably an application for that, an educational application. A lot of the complaints you have with the devices aren't working. They're not necessarily trying to access something we're wanting them to access.
Right.
They're trying to access something they want to access.
Right. And that's why I say that would, if we removed that, since now it's at the secondary level, I don't think, and I don't think it would require a policy change either because I don't think we ever granted that as a right within policy to use our network. It was always only for educational purposes and it wasn't.
I think in the current context, we simply took out that they, they could have their cell phones and those kind of devices.
Right.
But it's more instructions for educational.
So, I mean, I, I, I think, Mr. Dodd, if, if that's not something I would have a problem with, you know, as, as far as unless technology told us, technology, instructional technology said, no, we do use it regularly for that. But I don't think that's probably gonna be the case moving forward. So that's, you know, that's certainly something. And that, and that may also deal with the entire headache issue you have and maybe get back a little bit of bandwidth. You still have the issue of teachers and staff that wanna BYOD.
No, that's true.
And that's another conversation, but that's certainly an issue there too.
You're on that committee, right?
I am. I'm, I'm ready to take it. Okay.
Are there any questions? Okay, Mr. Chamberlain, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Endroski.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the preliminary study for the Roger Weaver Educational Complex evacuation route.
It should be Roger.
Did I say Roger?
Roger, Roger.
Yeah, but on here it says Robert. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger Weaver, yeah.
Let's talk construction.
Something a little different here.
Ever played those tennis courts?
Yes.
All right, February of this year, we're approved. What's that? I did, I didn't wanna hand them out because I don't wanna look ahead.
Really?
Well, we can. We brought PowerPoints, we'll go through it, the whole process, the reason for the PowerPoints, so you can review them, look at them later. We'll run through that in just a minute. February of this year, we approved a contract, the board approved, to hire George F. Young Consulting to look at the educational complex at La Canto in regards to the emergency evacuation route. Today, we're here to discuss the findings and present an option. And based upon the results of the conversations today, we'll bring it back possibly in August for a formal vote. Today, we can't vote because of the work deadline. This is a very large study. We tried to summarize it into the information that's pertinent to discussion today. We're giving you the PowerPoints to run through, but we'll run through it everything. With us today is Jerry Depkowski with George F. Young. I'm gonna turn the presentation over to him because he is the traffic guru and run us through the findings.
We apologize in advance for all we've dragged you through.
No problem. Good afternoon, Jerry Depkowski with George F. Young, transportation traffic engineer of 35 years. Started my career at the Florida Department of Transportation and then I became a director of a county where I ran 1,800 traffic signals. So I understand when the phone rings, there's an issue going on. Then became a director of City of Largo for a while, but my whole career is in transportation and traffic and I do a lot of schoolwork. Four thousand students trying to get in and out, so I understand how schools work. So I'd like to go through a little PowerPoint presentation. Thank you for selecting us to essentially be your consultant. We do a lot of schoolwork throughout the whole state of Florida. First of all, I just want to tell a little bit about the history. Essentially, as Eric said, that we started our notice to proceed on March 8th of 2018. And that essentially had a lot of things that had to be done. We wanted to get this, this study finished by essentially end of July, so we're very fortunate that we're right on time. We met with all of the directors, from the buses to the sheriff's department and to all of your directors in a charrette setting, where we sat around and talked about all the traffic issues, because I wanted to get a full understanding of what has happened over the last couple of years and the urgency of thinking about the evacuation route. So these were some of the stakeholders that we did, did meet with. As I said, even some of the principals from all the schools out of Roger Weaver Complex. And then we started collecting our traffic data. And we wanted to make sure we knew on West Educational Path what was going on, what was going on in front of the Renaissance Center, in front of the high schools. And we even went out to Saunders Way because that could be a part of an evacuation route. So we have a lot of really good background data that is very, very important to the study. And then we also came out and did video reconnaissance, essentially in the mornings, afternoons, just to make sure that we understand these peak times and what some of the issues were. But it was very important for your directors to share with me what's clearly happening on the sidewalks or what's clearly happening in the parking lots.
What device did you use for video reconnaissance?
GoPros.
Okay. Who did you use drones?
Uh, we're not allowed to. You gotta have a, we have a pilot and we have a drone, but over public roads, you're not allowed to fly a drone over public roads, even with permission. Right now, the Florida statute still allow private vendors to fly over public roads. Over your complex, we could have if we were having permission. But on Saunders Way or West Educational.
You knew that, didn't you?
No, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. But I just thought maybe that's what you were talking about with video, video videotaping, that it would be.
He's former sheriff's department.
Gotcha. Well, we, we follow the law. So, but also, we wanted to watch a lot of pedestrian activity because it's very interesting how parents would rather pick their child up somewhere off campus and that child is walking through the campus to get to that offsite location. So we're pretty sneaky in how we watch what's going on because we've been doing school stuff for a long, long time. So essentially, there, there's a lot that we did take a look at, as you can see there on slide four. To the right is the whole Roger Weaver Complex, very, very large. And as you well know, there's essentially one way in and one way out off of La Canto. And that is essentially 6,000 cars a day that are traveling on that road. But that's not what the issue is. The issue is, is that peak hour getting into the complex and coming out of the complex. But what that really relates to is if that road essentially is backed up all the way to La Canto Highway, then when you have an emergency, an EMS and fire or just some device has to get in there, it is extremely difficult. And then if the notice gets out that there's an issue on the campus, then all the parents are coming. So now EMS and fire can't get to that situation. So that's why I'm here tonight, is to share with you some thoughts of what we could do for the emergency evacuation or even getting on the site. So on the left side of the slide, these essentially are about seven or eight items that we took a look of as internal analysis. We wanted a good, good, good feeling of what are all the issues. And I, I hope you know this, but in the center of the aerial, there's a little black dot that essentially represents a gate. And Roger Weaver Complex, you cannot exit onto Saunders Way, it is gated off between the school board and the county. So that's, that's one of the issues that we looked at very closely. Very interesting graphic. If you wanna see how traffic.
Could you just go back for a minute? So you weigh the gate very heavily, is what you said, right?
Yes.
A gate.
Yes.
On a road.
Yes.
Does that mean the gate is, is?
Kryptonite.
You can't move the gate?
Kryptonite.
Well, why, why would that be weighed so heavily?
Well, from my perspective of a traffic consultant, if I wanna get people out of a site and there's a gate that isn't owned by myself, I gotta get permission to open that gate.
I thought that was our gate.
It is our gate.
Oh.
Yes, sir, that is.
Okay.
We have access to it.
So.
It's shared access to us, the utility companies, the county, because of emergency reasons. But it is locked on a full-time basis.
Yes, it is locked.
Okay.
So we took in consideration, if it stays locked or if it is locked, there has to be alternatives that we wanna take a look at. So to take a look at how much traffic is actually coming in and out of the complex, this demonstrates how much is westbound or eastbound, essentially along West Educational Path. And you can see from 6:00 to 8:00 AM, there's a tremendous amount of traffic coming in and it will back up all the way to La Canto. It is one solid line from the high school parking lot back to La Canto. In the afternoon, it's a little different, it's a little more moderate, but it still backs up to the traffic signal at La Canto. But you can see the peak is about half of what it is inbound. And the reason being, in the afternoon, of course, some parents aren't in as big of a hurry to pick their child up, so they may get there 10 minutes ahead of time and wait, where in the morning, everybody is in a big hurry to drop their child off and get to their business. But very interesting graphic, the rest of the day, La Canto and West Educational, they're running, they're running very smooth. There was really no issues.
Before you go on there, had, we've gotten, I think a lot of us have over the years, concerned public members saying that at that intersection area, that there's been a tremendous amount of accidents. Is that really reflective though? Because sometimes perception is not always what actual events are. Was there any, was that considered in any of this?
At this location here?
Yes.
Actually, there were more crashes on West Educational Path. They were rear ends, where people weren't paying attention. They're either texting or calling and they're on the way. And it was amazing, the rear end, I even was there when.
On, on West Educational and on 491?
Yes.
I mean, there were more incidences on, on the educational path than there was on the highway path?
From our study period, yes.
Okay, wow.
This is actual traffic data down by the Renaissance Center, where you have essentially a, a guard that stands there in the afternoon and sometimes in the morning to let them come in and out. This is to give you a feeling of how much traffic is actually turning right or left going into the Renaissance Center. The one movement that, if you could focus in on is if you're kinda going west on Educational Path, you'll see 911 cars just past that 766 are turning right to go into the school. That is an extremely heavy movement. And if there's any kind of incident within that intersection, they will be backed up to the traffic signal out on La Canto Highway. But that's pretty interesting. There's a lot of traffic going through there and your guard does the best job she can in the afternoon, including those coming out of the high school. They like to turn right, head towards the bus compound, make a U-turn and then try to get back out. And she'll actually stop them because she knows they're trying to beat the system. So she's very good out there. But what a job. It is tough.
Is this a 24-hour study?
This, this right here is one hour.
One hour in the morning.
In the morning.
At that 7?
At 7:00 AM. You have almost 800 cars turning right. So getting to the findings for essentially the evacuation route, we really feel that the immediate onsite movement as part of the study was to look at those access routes and come up with what we think is by far the best solution for the finances that you have, for the urgency that you have, and essentially to solve the problem. So if you can focus on this a little bit, to the left is the very large parking lot in front of the high school and middle school. And right in the center of the graphic is essentially the, I can't see, the Technology Resource Center, sorry. So I wanted to, that you kinda understand where you're at. And then to the far right of the slide is essentially the county property line. So of the options that we took a look at, it just appears financial-wise, design-wise, construction-wise, that essentially where the gate is on the very right side of the slide at Saunders, that we could build a 24-foot wide asphalt surface evacuation route that would go from that gate due west and then tie in with the split roads in front of the high school. And what this design would accommodate is if there's buses and vehicles that are stuck up on the north end of the high school, there's a path that they could very easily get into that would take them onto this evacuation route. If they're in the south end of the complex and let's say West Edu, West Edu- If they're in the south end of the complex and let's say West Educati, West Educational Path is completely blocked, they would be able to come to the north and then essentially turn right and get on this access point to get out onto Saunders. Uh, we designed it to be 24-foot wide so that if a sheriff's car is coming in, a bus could still be going out, so it's wide enough without too much expense of curb and gutter and a lot of drainage issues. This is perfect soils for an evacuation route of, of allowing drainage to just filter its way off the road. And then short-term onsite, the parking lot has a lot of issues where when cars come in, they'll race across the entire parking lot to maybe get to a spot closer to the school. We have an option that I'm gonna show you in a minute where we're gonna try to control those movements on this parking lot and create like one-way segments that they'll have to follow that because there can be curb stops or something to essentially keep them in line. And when I designed Countryside High School, 4,000 cars coming in and out, uh, pretty interesting design where I had to have four lanes coming in in the morning just to get them onsite and essentially seniors, juniors drop off. And that, after three days, the whole rule in the business is they learn after three days how to get around the school. You gotta control them. You gotta keep them where you really want them. And then we looked at one other thing is the bell times do make a huge difference on traffic backups. Uh, so we're, we're suggesting that if there's a chance to move that, we're, I think it's a great idea. Even a 10-minute extra separation with bell times can make a big, big difference in backups of traffic. So this is the parking lot in front of the high school. You see a lot of little arrows and through arrows and turn arrows. Essentially, this is one big serpentine type of configuration that you can be anywhere in this parking lot and say, oh, I'd like to go over to the north. You can go to the north. Uh, but the real, the real, um, solution is kind of like in the lower left corner, we're gonna let that entire parking lot come out onto one lane that has no restrictions. It'll be a free flow out of the parking lot, which will then head out towards West Educational Path. There are so many driveway accesses to these parking lots and that's what's causing the confusion and people have to be very courteous to let one another out. The courtesy thing essentially goes away. You now have your own access, your own one-way to depart out of the parking lot. So this is a little complex, how we shared it with staff, but you know, a lot of heads were scratching like, wow, we're used to one-way, the way we're doing it today. This parking lot is due to be resurfaced very soon, so this is perfect timing to essentially restripe it, add some curving if that's what we need, and get direction of how these folks would go. So it's, it's almost kind of like a maze, but it works very, very well that you have to go one-way. There'd be a lot of markings and signs essentially keeping the students in line. Looking at the long-term, uh, and this, this was just, uh, your staff asked us to think of everything we could within the parameters of their boundary of what are some other solutions that maybe we can do long-term? And I'm sure some of, some of you have heard of the roundabout. They're all over the state now. Actually, the Florida Department of Transportation just came out and said that the future of a lot of their intersections will be roundabouts. They're taking traffic signals out. And I've probably designed about, probably about eight in the state. Uh, up at the University of Florida was my last design. And of course, that one had 10,000 bicycles go on rounded bulk, so, so I understand how bicycles work. But I'd like to just share with you a thought that we had, right there in front, uh, down in that corner where before you, you make your left turn and you head on out of the campus onto West, West Educational, is we just threw in a roundabout and we have a computer software that essentially designs these and tells you will it work efficiently. And traffic business is just like school business. Traffic at level surface A means everything's just going beautiful. Everybody's moving real well. Traffic signal at an F or road at an F, you're failed, you're stopped. It's just not right. This actually works at traffic level B with the traffic that you have. So it'll work very, very well. Uh, what I like about it is your, your officer that's there every day can go away. This thing will operate on its own without having the fear of crashes. These actually reduce crashes versus traffic signals and four-way stops, et cetera.
Have you, do you have it where you were able to grade it with her there with the traffic versus the cul-de-sac, the roundabout?
Um, from the.
Like is her, like her being there, is it a D and this would create it into a B?
Uh, that's a great question and I have probably sat there three or four times, uh, to the point where she got to know me really well. And I would say that she does everything she can.
Sure.
And she is probably at a D to an E.
Okay.
Just because in the traffic business, a lot of people think that if you put an officer in a traffic signal when it's flashing, that the officer will be more efficient. There, it'll never happen because they have to stop one way, then they have to stop the other way to make sure nobody's trying to, a traffic signal is so efficient. So in this case, roundabouts are designed to eliminate traffic signals, which make them even more efficient. What I love about this design is if you look up into what I would call the northeast corner, there's actually a separate lane all by itself to accommodate that 799 cars. So they're gonna be free flowing into campus. And what I love about this is Panther Pride to the west has very minimal traffic. Now, I know the bus compound is out there, buses come through at a little different time than what the peak out of the school does. So the roundabout coming from the north, all the students really aren't impeded by anybody to the west. So it's just a concept. It's not in the, the financial end of it, but, uh, I wanted to share that with the staff that this is a pretty neat idea that could see at least one more of your staff personnel doesn't have to be there.
And I will say, I, I visited a foreign place in Iceland and they have no stoplights. And the bus that I was on, her bus, didn't stop at these roundabouts. We were, and we were gone. They work.
They work very well.
We're not used to them because we're used to stoplights, but these things really work. I was amazed.
Yeah, I would, you know, my professional opinion is there are places where they don't belong and there are places where they work very well. In this case, I think it would work extremely well. So in essentially closing, we, we focused on the evacuation route and essentially the line you see from the right, which is the county line, if you take that evacuation route to the west, force the parking lot. If you want to do the parking improvements, uh, about 160-some thousand, the evacuation route roughly 440,000 comes essentially out to about $603,000 to put in the evacuation route and all the improvements that would be needed to get to the evacuation route and the resurfacing, striping, and some curb, uh, things that are needed within the parking lot. So the total project for the evacuation route with fixing the parking area is about 603,000.
Okay. And what about the roundabout? We added that, how much more would that be?
The roundabout, uh, we estimated it'd be about 260,000.
That's 367.
Oh, three, I'm sorry, um, 367. Yep, sorry.
Now, when we had our emergency incidents out at the campus that precipitated this study, there's no way those parents can come in, and this might be that gate question, but they can't come in on Saunders and then clog up this emergency route, can they?
No, it would be used only for EMS fire and buses.
Okay.
To get in and out.
Correct. What was the, um, option to make this a second entrance and exit? I mean, did you even look at that as far as creating a, I mean, because to me, if we're talking about a temporary, I mean, I thought we were looking at this in order to have another full-time entrance and exit.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say. Chuck, cause he's the planning.
Well, no, there were supposed to be some options.
Well, that's beyond the scope because basically we're looking at using impact fee funds for emergency ingress and egress. And, uh, let me just explain, uh, one point is the school board's responsibility begins and ends at their property line. The, uh, you know, that's been litigated, you know, it was litigated in Hillsborough County. The, uh, it has to be either on your property or directly adjacent to your property. So looking at traffic improvements that are on 491 aren't adjacent to the school board property. So they're really not germaning to this particular issue. Now, um, it's not to say that we can't cooperate and look at that in the future, but this, the, the issue that we're addressing, this emergency ingress and egress, and this would also lend itself to improvements down the road if we had to put in a second. We didn't want to do anything that would, that would be, um, counterproductive, if, for lack of a better term, in pursuing that. So this would, you know, be the traffic flow that we would look at if we had to have another way in and out, but that's really a separate issue.
I thought there were concerns that the county had expressed about the idea of using Saunders Way as a secondary. Not that I'm saying that, that that doesn't mean that it still couldn't be pushed, but I'm saying I thought they had reservations because the idea of a second light at Saunders Way.
Yes, they, uh, that would create an expense, you know, probably over half a million dollars for another signal. This is for emergency use and this would not be something that we would have to abandon if they chose to do that. You know, we could look at improving this more, you know, over and above, beyond emergency use. But, um, what George F. Young looked at was just emergency ingress and egress.
But why not have an option on that road that goes by the TRC? And it's very clear in the map that you could reconfigure that parking lot and not, I mean, there's plenty of room to add another parking lot out there and you could reconfigure. I mean, the argument was, well, they can't get a fire truck through there, but they get 18-wheelers through there. But even with that, I thought we were gonna have another option that would be a lot less expensive than this one, to be able to use the existing road. I mean, you basically built a cul-de-sac on the existing road that's there. Why not have an, an avenue to, to go and if it's only gonna be for evacuation, use the existing road and just reconfigure that, that parking lot between the TRC and La Canto Primary School to have an access road that would go through there?
I think it goes through a trailer park.
No, no, I'm talking about on our, on our. If you look on the map, if you look at how that turn is, that road that goes down to the TRC and then it makes the sharp left and the sharp right, well, you could come across that parking lot, um, and reconfigure that parking lot and still not lose very many spaces. We got a lot of room there for parking. So I guess my question was that was that an op, why wasn't that an option? That'd be a huge, that'd be a lot less expensive than having to build an entire new road. Now, I know that was discussed, the road, I went out there and looked at it, and so I'm not faulting anyone for that. I'm just saying, there's a cheaper option here.
Well, I'll let Jerry address that, but I'll just say that we have looked at that in the past. And with the bus compound and getting the buses out and bringing them through the primary school parking lot, that was, that was a problem.
But I thought the issue wasn't the parking lot as much as it was that the cars stacked up during that period of time. So there was no place to put the cars where the parents came in. What you're saying is correct about the parking lot. You could move or create more parking, but the problem became the traffic flow.
You wanna bypass all that.
And, um, and that's why I was just trying to make sure that we, it's the traffic flow of the, of the parent drop-off and pickup that I thought was the problem.
It is. And the whole purpose was to get the congestion away from the school. Now, we did, Mr. Dodd, answer your question. We have several other options we looked at, other roads, there's some that are less expensive. We've even looked at utilizing one of the recommendations from George Young was looking out at the utility lines, getting a road out there. Chuck is actually researching that end of it. We've been down that road in the past, utilities won't grant us the access, the easements, things like that. We've tried it, but we're going to reach out again and try. With that being said, the goal was to try to get the traffic away from the school. Now, should you like, we can very easily go back and revisit some kind of a road through there, just understanding that congestion's still gonna be around the school, routing the buses through there, things like that. But we can definitely go back and look at that if you'd like to. That's kind of what we're here for today. I'm sorry.
One of the problems was on the night of that, or the day of that incident, was buses that were supposed to be going to other schools and picking up children could not get out on the roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Completely bypassed.
So how are the buses gonna get from our compound over here to this emergency access road?
Well, part of the feedback we got, and that's where if you look really close at the details on it, was we wanted to be able to do a couple of things. We wanted to be able to, A, get buses, and not just the buses, get the bus drivers in. We couldn't even get the drivers into the buses and the compounds on some of it. So that way with, and this would be a joint effort if we had an incident with law enforcement, you know, being out at 491 places like that. That way, people with badges, IDs, we could run them through and get bus drivers in through the access road, bypassing all the congestion of the parking lots, the primary school, the middle school, the high school, and get them directly. If you look very close at the slide, there's a set of gates where we can open up and run drivers into the compound, straight across the road, and then turn around and bring them right back out to get them to the schools.
Where's the compound from the tennis courts? Cause I'm only looking at.
Yes, ma'am. Compound would be in the bottom-left corner.
Okay. So there, how are they gonna get from around those tennis courts to get over to across the educational path and get to this one?
A series of roads. They would, they would follow the same route. They would go in front of Renaissance, which is not shown on this slide, and then straight up West Educational Path on there.
But wasn't that clogged with cars like it was?
Well, that's where we're gonna have to have the, the use of law enforcement. I mean, that's another option we can look at as well. There is no perfect solution. Our goal was to try to be able to get people in and get them out with a secondary means for when they do become clogged up because law enforcement hopefully will be some of the first onsite response. The goal is to be able to get the people in and out as well.
But there's a, there's another parking lot between the north end of the school where Student Services is.
Yes, ma'am.
Crest.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's another parking lot there that goes around the backside. And that just, that ends, there's no way to get around that?
Right.
And into this.
But the congestion we have was stacking on the roads coming in from the incident. I'm referring back to the incident of 2016.
Yeah, that was precipitated.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And that was, the feedback we got is we needed an alternate route to get people in and out. Now, we can definitely, like Mr. Dodd suggested, look back through the parking lots if we wanna go for a, a cheaper path. It does come with issues, meaning that we're running through parking lots, we don't know the status of cars, who's leaving going. The thought here was to bypass around all the parking and get as a direct route as possible in and out of the compound.
The trouble, I'm, I'm just, and I've got an aerial here, um, on mine, but that goes farther. The trouble about, um, the utility lines is first of all, as we, as, as Mr. Dixon just mentioned, there's an issue of whose financial responsibility is it to build that road?
Right.
And secondly, it's from what I can tell about a mile from a road to the edge of our property of the utility line, the closest point of our property. Unless you're talking, I mean, one direction or another to tie it into an existing property, there's a, there's a tremendous amount of asphalt somebody would have to do compared to what you're suggesting.
We're gonna have the Parkway going up there right by the power line shortly.
This particular plan, I think, and I've worked with Jerry now, he, he also worked, uh, here before he got the job with the district doing a, a study for the mine across the street when they wanted to build the, uh, the residential project at the end of, uh, Educational Path. So he's very familiar with the traffic and under normal conditions. What this does is this really kills two birds with one stone. It gives us the best emergency route for the money without, without compromising our existing, uh, parking, number of parking spaces and proximity of those parking spaces to the schools, which people typically don't want to walk a long way if they don't want to, to put the parking spaces way off somewhere and expect them to be used. This is a, is a, is a plan that, that lets us keep our parking spaces, the number that we have, and the locations that they are, in improved traffic circulation. It allows the buses to get out without having to go through any of the parking areas, which are the ones that are, that are clogged up in any situation, even under normal use, notwithstanding an emergency. And it also, I think, gives us the beginning or the basis for a future access point. So what we're doing here is not gonna need to be torn out down the road. It can be built on and improved into a, you know, a more permanent situation if and when the time comes that the county chooses to put in a traffic light on 491 and, and make that a connection. And we, we'll be ready for it. We won't have to tear something out and redo it. But at the same time, it gives us the ability to, to exit or to, to get out of there if we have an emergency or bring emergency vehicles in. And, and being there during that last emergency situation, one thing that nobody really thought about was how the buses would get out. You know, that's our largest bus compound and they were all stuck in there. This will allow them to get out with only minimal law enforcement would have to come and, and clear that one road on Educational Path, but other than that, they would be able to get out because they've went, went through a parking lot.
I'm, I'm looking at the connector between the proposed road that you have, emergency access road, and the existing asphalt there. Would you, would that need to be configured now in order to accept our emergency road? Because it looks like it's actually, um, bearing north. Uh, you prob, it's harder to see on, on the image you have. You probably, it's harder to see on, on the image you have, but it's that green area there. You kind of, it, it looks, yeah, I mean, you're, the way I'm looking at it, it looks like it doesn't quite marry in. It looks like you have to marry in and then make a jog. So I'm thinking if you're ever at some point going to have to...
Yeah, that intersection, we'd have to work with that and understand what we're showing there in that area. We're not sure, this is under a study, which is conceptual right now.
Right.
When we build that road, if we ever build that road, we're going right through a DRA, so we have to have compensating storage somewhere else. We're not sure how much further Swiftmont's going to push us, but we have to at least indicate that we have growth area for that DRA. Where you can see on the farhand right of the slide, that is the edge of our property. So what Chuck was indicating is that road, we would have the infrastructure on our property if we ever had the expansion, if the county decided to do something out there as well. So it serves as an immediate need access road and it also gives you that future.
I think this is where he's taking the pavement out.
It is.
So that would be...
Potentially with the DRA.
Yeah, so that would just allow...
And once again, we're bringing this to you for...
To me, I, I mean, that's a, that's an access point right now.
Yes, sir.
And I would rather have the option, as a former law enforcement officer, if I had to get to Emery's, or to La Canto Primary School and I'm going to use that road, it's just extended my time hugely, having to go all the way down the new road, all the way back down. I mean, I don't know why, if there's, if there needs to be a gate there like there is now, and that, you know, to be, have options to evacuate is a good thing. And this, that to me looks like it limits your options. Now, you know, I know we're just at the starting point, but I got to tell you, on slide 10, you know, and I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on why this isn't going to work, but I, I have a hard time, you know, if you want to see kids going the wrong way on a one-way street, you look at that La Canto High School parking lot and there's only one way out of there.
Correct.
And you're going to have to weave your way in through all those cars. And if you've been, I mean, you've seen the high school parking lot, they're all trying to get out. And they're not all going to be following nice, a nice little line. That means if you want to know where the best place to park is, it's going to be way up here in this bottom left corner because that's your way out. If you park up here close to school, you're going to have to do some weaving and going and waiting and, and to me, you're going to have kids going the wrong way.
They're all going to be lined up and they're not going to let you out.
And they're, they're going to be going the wrong way down that road that you have on, on Educational Path. It's only one way in. Then if you look over here at the, the, the next parking lot to the right, you come in there and you literally have to weave yourself through there and then you put yourself over here by the buses because there's the only way out of that parking lot is way to the right, the same way the buses are going to be leaving. And they're, I, man, I just, I think...
I'll defer the answer of that question to the traffic consultant.
I do, yeah.
I'm going to say right now, it's every bit Carl Austin's fault. Because when Nick Ryan was chairman of the county commission, he went to Carl Austin and he said, "We have a problem. We need to fix it." And I'm here to tell you, it was miniscule compared to this. Great charge.
We knew we were building a landline piece of property.
Well, Ms. Drossen was my elementary school principal and I liked the man, so.
I liked him too. He didn't help with this situation when he was superintendent. We didn't have a problem.
And Mr. Dodd, I think the parking lot, I, I had some of the same things and the consultant can answer those in a second. The only thing that I would just say is having been out there a lot, when the parents stack up for particularly pickup, I'm thinking.
Right.
If there's an emergency and you have a cruiser, you can't get in through the current one because those cars are completely stacked up. It's very hard to exit because, I mean, even if you have a car, you have to be very gentle as you get through there. So I, that's my only concern. I agree with what you're saying as far as cost and the other piece. I just don't know how that could be addressed without saying we would need to address a, some type of new configuration for stacking cars.
Right, but look, if you park here...
Oh, no, I agree with what you're saying here.
You want, you, the only way out, you got to go from here all the way down this road.
No, no, it, it looks like what you do is you actually come here and go out.
No, no, that's just one, yeah.
I'm underscrubbed.
Yeah. All of this...
Yeah, then, then I misunderstood your script. No, I mean it here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got you.
That's what I missed. You're right.
You, you mean over on the side.
Doug, I like Mr. Austin too.
I know.
But he didn't, he didn't help us with the situation.
I know.
All I'm saying, back in the day, forty-five years ago.
I'll share my comment. You're, you're correct. It's a serpentine motion. Depending upon where you park could be your fastest way out. But what's happening today is essentially there's four or five openings coming out of the high school lot.
Yeah.
There's four or five open, or two or three coming out of the other lot to the north. And they all fight to get out onto Educational Path to get stopped. What this plan does is when you come out of the high school lot, you're in your own lane. When you come out of the northern lot, you're into your own lane. So the side swiping and arguing of who goes first goes away. That's what this plan really does. Do you do serpentine motion? You do. But the point will be is you're going to get out of this lot a lot quicker by having this one access point than you would of how it's laid out today because everybody's honking their horns and, and they're saying, well, hey, I went first, et cetera. So this really takes more control, but you're correct. You're going to work your way depending upon where you park.
I'll have to change my cell phone number after, after... It's going to be a lot of...
Automated vehicles start in a couple of years.
Would you be able to...
I'll have to come back.
Yeah, we can, I mean...
Can you show the model of that to us? Because I, I think that might help being able to see what that model flow would look like. And I think if you have the ability of setting the number of cars and traffic and so forth, and I, and I know because I've seen some of your presentations. So, so maybe that would be something before we either gave it a yay or a nay that we could, you know, we could present. And that also would help us show the public to say, this is, this does, you know, there's, there, it's not like we just came out of this and, you know, decided one evening to come up with it. There's a computer model that, that actually is analyzed.
And this really isn't necessary, is it necessary to configure this because of the roundabout and, and clearing Educational Path or is it just a, an option to the emergency evacuation?
No, this, this is not an option to the emergency. This is, they're going to resurface the lot. Let's take a look and see how we can make it more safe, more efficient, easier for the students to know where to park. So, yeah, this is a little separate from the evacuation, but since they share with me they're, they got to redo it here soon, I gave them some ideas.
Okay.
So if we look at this lot right now on, on slide 10, and, you know, there's a lot of times you're out there after school events and there's even less cars in here now. I mean, it's, so if this guy's parked up here towards the front, towards the, the road, and now it's time for him to leave, and there's no, there's hardly any cars in the parking lot, okay? That is, isn't he just going to go out, he's going to go the wrong way on that road to get out? Because why not? There's nobody around here.
Well, we're not going to put curb stops down the entire lines. When that traffic, when that parking lot is empty, you can drive wherever you wish. This is going to be marked with lines, striping.
Yeah.
But what really happens is on the, on the lower side is where we have raised curbing to keep you, when these lots are full, that you got to channelize your way around near Educational Path, but...
See, I can defend the roundabout, even though people are going to hate it. It'll just take a little while for them to get, it'll take a little while to get used to. Once they get used to it, it'll be okay, but we can, I can, you know, I can...
I can sell that.
Yeah, I can sell it. But this parking lot configuration, I can tell you right now, it's, in my book, it's not going to fly. And I would, I'd like to seize another option at least for that. I mean, right now, we need another emergency exit. My, my vision was, you know, to have this road that went up through there that I understand as an option. And then option two would be a road reconfigured through that parking lot around the TRC that's already there. That would probably be half the cost. And, you know, that was what I was thinking that we were going to have. And so...
And we can surely do that, Mr. Dodd.
Yeah, but I'm just one person. But right now, I would have to say that, you know, the evacuation route is the most important. The parking lot issue and the roundabout may have to wait, but I do like what Mr. Dixon said about working, you know, with the county, I mean, to make sure they know because when, when we had this discussion originally, we had one commissioner saying that, that they would push to have a traffic light down on Saunders Way because there was another piece of property that was looking to be developed there that they were trying to find some options for because if I remember right, they're going to be, it's going to cost them some money, isn't that right, Mr. Dixon, to be able to, if, if that property were to sell and be developed? That there would be an issue there that we could, you know, work together on.
Currently, the county doesn't have transportation concurrency. So they're not requiring a developer to pay proportionate fair share for off-site traffic improvements.
Okay.
The county says that they were going to put something in their work program, but it's not in there now. It's a...
Did you check on that because it's not inside?
It's not in the... There's nothing in the work program to this date about improvements to 491, traffic intersections or anything else. So we can't assume that that's going to happen. And that really doesn't have anything to do with emergency exiting or access to the site. It's really a separate issue and...
But isn't that property, you know, the property that I'm talking about on Educational Path on the right, yeah? Isn't that zoned for?
It's zoned for commercial.
Okay, they were trying to get it changed to...
They were trying to change to multi-family.
Multi-family, okay. So right now, it's, it's not, it hasn't been changed, isn't it?
No, and currently, commercial is not, is, the problem with high-density residential is that its peak hour is the same as, the peak hour that Jerry showed you, 7:00 AM in the morning, 8:00 AM in the morning. That's when people leave to go to work. So they're taking a left on Educational Path and going out. At the same time, people are coming, taking a right and coming in to the school. So that's the problem with residential being on that site. And it's not currently zoned for residential, it's currently zoned for commercial.
I thought there's also a statement about, you said, traffic light at Saunders. But it would be too close with the traffic light that's on Educational, so you couldn't have a traffic light.
That was, my understanding is because it's less than a quarter of a mile away, but the county at one point said that they, they would make an exception to that. So that, if they choose to do that, that's their prerogative, but it really has nothing to do with the school, with the...
You can't do it on 41 for Emery's Middle, because it's State Road, right?
Right.
Yeah. You have control of the county roads.
And, and I know this may be throwing a monkey wrench into it, but I do keep looking at what you've proposed and, and thinking that one of the challenges we have is the stacking up of, never mind, it doesn't work. I just answered my own question. The, the only thing that I would say is that, I'm, I'm with Mr. Dodd, that we, the access road is a, is a, you know, is a, the most highest concern that we need to address. I, I would agree though with both the consultant and the staffs suggesting that the, the proposed road that they're doing would serve us both in the short term and potentially the long-term, you know, situation potentially of, of Educational Path. I would be certainly willing to say that, you know, to make sure that whatever we design or look there, we're not duplicating if we so desire to change that into a, a regular daily usage.
Right, it would be able to be changed to a full-time...
So that, yeah, and I think that's the only thing where I come back to the connector there. And, and you may, and that may have been something you already done. The, the only thing, the other thing is, I think that there's, and I know this is hard because I'm not a fan of, whether you want to call them roundabouts or rotaries or whatever you want to call it. And I come from New England where there's a lot of them too for years. And Bermuda, the island and the villages, all have them. And, and yes, they aren't my favorite thing, although visually they can be beautiful. They do serve a very valid purpose. And if the engineering's been looked at correctly, they can be a tremendous time saver and safety, you know, situation. That being said, and it's a, and it's an, it's a legal issue as well, could, could impact fee Mondays, if we had them, be used for that purpose? For the roundabout improvement because we are increasing capacity of that road?
Well, the impact fees for schools can only be used for emergency access. They can't be used for increasing capacity of a road per se because they're not road impact fees. But if they're part of Jerry's proposal to provide emergency ingress and egress, I think they can because you don't have to have, you know, you don't have gridlock in a, in a roundabout. You have a free-flowing lane coming in and you have, you know, a clear lane for buses going out. So it would have to go back and get approved for that purpose. But I think if the price tag is above what was originally approved, we can always take it back and ask.
So then, then maybe the question is, are we saying it's defendable to be used impact fees if the board so desired for that?
Jerry says yes, so.
Okay, well, he's the one that's going to have to defend it, so.
I mean, it's...
In part. No, I mean...
It's part of the emergency block.
I, I, I would agree, and that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that the, the roundabout is something we should consider. Because if there is funding availability, that may have some of the single, signal, single, most biggest impact to access along that road, whether that's emergency access from cars not running into each other or being able to have enough flow that we can actually get, get in. That would be then the other case of, does that have any impact on the emergency road if, if that is in the formula of moving the emergency road back to where it currently is? Which is what you were initially saying. Because I'm thinking if you put in the roundabout, does that now say, well, the, the need is less to develop that other road? For the, at least for, for today? And I, and I just don't know. I mean, that, that's going to be a computer model, I'm assuming.
That other road that you're talking about, the existing road, that, that essence is the La Canto Primary School parent pickup.
And that's why I say, I don't, what I don't know is if it's done and is there restriping? Is there a difference of putting, I don't know if there's, the answer may be is we're still back at the same place. I just don't, I'm just saying to, to make sure we haven't not explored that.
The problem with using that road, we looked at that before. You know, all schools happen to have two points of ingress and egress. But this, the problem, this is 200 acres and there's five schools there. So it's kind of cumulatively, you've got a problem that you didn't have. It was originally, you know, when this complex was originally conceived, it wasn't planned to be this big. So you keep the buses separate from the cars. You had to put this other road in to get it away from the school there because the buses can't navigate through all...
So that goes back to what Mr. Mullin, it's, the problem is, is you move, if you put the road back, if you keep the road where it is, it still doesn't deal with, or it doesn't solve anything.
All of the problems.
If you have your cars and buses mixed in together trying to get out of the...
I, I still think though, if, you know, while if, if it's a priority of funding, the road needs to go first. But I, I think we really need to explore whether that roundabout is, is an option. Because I do think, particularly when I look at your, your information, that 700 was it? Or almost 800 cars can flow directly in there. That's a significant amount of traffic going in. I mean, a significant amount, especially when there's a very limited number that's actually needing to get to the other side of the, of the parking lot, so. And not that, but there could be some very positive things that the schools could do with that center island too, that they could utilize. I mean, I could see, you know, I could see some different things the schools could consider to also develop that, you know, maybe even some veterans saluting, you know, or something to salute to veterans, flags, something.
Well, I think we've definitely accomplished our goal and received some feedback. And with that being said, the takeaway is that I'm going to walk away from, and that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to spur conversation, so that's a good thing. Yes, we did. We definitely got the feedback that the parking lot is not a preferred method. Heard you a lot in there. We'll revisit that. We are also, listening to Mr. Dodd's side, we can explore. We have done some short-term improvements already. In the event of an incident, that we've, we've done some improvements out there already where we could get buses. The problem is if we have an incident at one o'clock, we'll get buses through. If we have an incident at three o'clock and there's parents stacked up, it's a done deal. We're not getting people through. So hence, that's what spurred it. But we can definitely revisit that area, maybe parking lot configurations on it, and break back some options later to the board.
Do we have an amount of money and impact fees that we, we have to spend or what's our...
Yes, well, I'm checking.
Yeah, what we did was we, the county originally assisted us with a, with a design, you know, conceptual design. And based on that, they gave us a figure of 662.5, I think, for the...
Six sixty-seven.
Six sixty-seven. But I think if Jerry gives us a breakdown of the actual costs of the preferred... But I think if Jerry gives us a breakdown of the actual costs of the preferred project, we could go back to the county and say, this is what, you've done the study now. We've got all the data and this is what the best bang for the buck is, the best... And then see if we can qualify the larger project for that now that we know the actual configuration or the best configuration for it. Because before, we had a traffic circle up near the front and we had something similar, but it wasn't a workable, we never looked at the actual data to come up with that. That was just kind of a conceptual drawing that was done. You know, the county assisted us with that. But, you know, I think the traffic circle, the road, restriping the parking lot, but not doing the changes internally, that one-way traffic, maybe just leaving it as is, but making it better defined in terms of marking and so forth. And then put that in a proposal, take it to the county and see what the response is. And then the impact fees will pay for it. You know, it's probably going to be closer to a million dollars, you know, when it's all said and done. But, you know, then you'll have something that does what you need done and something that will also help you in the future when you have to look at a second access point.
The emergency road could certainly probably be built during the school year because it wouldn't have necessarily too much. But a roundabout situation would, I'm assuming, need to be a summer project.
I would suggest that, yes.
I mean, I can only, but I'm saying, is it feasible that it could be done within a summer?
Absolutely, yes. No. If we tried to do it during the school year, we'd lose our traffic order.
Yeah, no, that's what I said. But I meant, is it even something conceivable?
No, the access road could definitely be done during the school year. The roundabout would be a conversation that would have to be during the summer. Ceiling striping, same thing during the summer, and or over large breaks. We have, we're learning to work in different windows of time.
But basically, though, you are telling us that you kind of have already kind of worked out another, that route right now as a temporary evacuation.
Yes, sir. Yeah. What we did is we...
Round it off some corners.
We have some corner issues, curvatures. We had trees in the way. So we've done the trimming that way. Mr. Dodd, we did an optimal solution. No, it's not, but at least... If we had to, we have to.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No, it's already been accomplished. That was the immediate short term. This is the longer plan.
Okay, super. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you for waiting all this time.
Give you your lunch the next day.
All right, Mr. Dixon, policy review.
Yes. Thank you. I'll keep this brief, but I know you're really good. Just to kind of give you a recap for where this came from. I know you may recall back in last year in October, you approved... Or actually, last year is part of an FDLE audit in January of '17. We got a laundry list of things that needed to be added to the Criminal Justice Information System, which is a separate system that involves human resources and security. It's not the student system. But the FDLE did an audit, which was done throughout the country and gave us a laundry list of things that needed to be addressed in school board policy. That was a, those resulted in about 20 different policies that were all related to computer security. That was adopted by the board on October 10th of last year. At the same time, FDLE sent us a, their approval or their compliance letter. They also said that in the next audit, there were going to be some recommended changes to four of those areas and that Dr. Getz and I just decided to move forward and go ahead and make those changes so that in 2019 or 2020, when then we get the next audit, that we already have those in place. And the first one is 8.804 Authenticator Management. It's like passwords. And that's really the only one that had any substance to it. But as you can see, these things, we're currently in compliance. These policies are already in the policy manual, but we're just making some tweaks so that the next time we get audited, we'll already be in compliance. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on that one?
Mr. Chandler and I have also gone over these and he's up to, fully up to speed on everything now that Dr. Getz has retired.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that, is that all? You want to, I mean, I've read through all of them. I'm good. Of course, I've been on that committee this year as a chairman. But is there any questions about any of these? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, very good. The last item is our safety initiatives with this search.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
You know, I've been really busy this summer, so it's a really long... It's not very long.
Volume one.
Okay, we have been very, very busy. And one thing I do like to say to folks when I share with them things that we're doing is that fortunately, we have been a very proactive district for many years in regards to safety. So we were way ahead of where a lot of districts are. We have had our district safety, our district safety and security committee that meets on a monthly basis for probably 15 to 20 years. It's not something, so this is not something that all of a sudden we're looking at safety. But since the Senate bill that we received after the February 14 incident, there were many mandates in that Senate bill that we are working very hard to meet this summer. So I want to review with you some of the things that we have done since the February 14 incident. Do you have a few hard copies? If anybody wants hard copies? Yes, no? Yes. Okay. Okay, so on February, I'm sorry, on March 14th, select staff...
Scott, you can give it back. She's giving it back to you.
I'm sorry. I thought this was the...
She's read this one.
Sorry.
I'm having trouble focusing here.
Watch your butterflies. Squirrel.
I do have with me Greg Covino. He is our environmental and safety project leader, as well as Mr. Balmour. So on March 14th, a group of four of us went to see a Phil Chalmers training that was titled Identifying Common Characteristics of Violent Teens. We learned a lot from that. We decided that we wanted to bring him back for more folks in our district to hear this training. We also have reviewed and refined our substitute procedures regarding the locking of doors and keys. We put processes in place. There's not a lot of great detail in this report to you due to the fact that it is safety and security and not something, it is protected as far as public record. We also initially had FISBIT come to do assessments of each of our school sites along with Mr. Covino and Tom Watkins and myself for a few of those as well. So this was before it was mandated that we do an assessment on every school site. We went ahead and took the initiative, had FISBIT come down with their safety specialist, and we did walk every campus. And some recommendations were made and the follow-up to those are being worked on now. Work orders have been done and we are doing things that were noticed during those assessments. Also, an enhanced paging system capability on our school and district phones. We now have paging capabilities on those phones, which will enhance the security on our campuses. We have enhanced our trespass notification processes. We've tied in those notifications to our Raptor so that when someone is rapturing onto campus, it'll flag them if they are trespassed from our campus. When available, we're also attaching a photograph to these to assist the people that are working in the front desks. Also, the See Something, Say Something protocol has been adopted with our maintenance and transportation departments. This is something that was discussed at their meetings early on. And this is just for them to make sure they're being aware of their surroundings and anything that they see that may be out of the ordinary or suspicious, they're reporting immediately. Also, lessons learned...
Without giving any specifics to, is that something where there is a standardization, though, that that gets to whoever it needs to? I mean, it's like if I see something, say something to my supervisor, how does that get? I don't need to have that answer, but I guess...
Those maintenance and transportation do have protocols. But if there's something they need to report, they know how to do that. Lessons learned, myself and Mr. Bishop, we had an opportunity to meet with a former administrator from the Columbine District just to talk with him, ask questions, lessons that he learned from being within that district. Also, we participated in a Columbine webinar that was provided that talked about various topics, including reunification sites. We invited the Department of Transportation to do a safety survey of our transportation practices and our buses. So that was a very thorough investigation that was done and we're awaiting a report from them. Additional cameras, we have installed some new cameras at at least three sites and we have upgraded cameras at three sites. We have a small amount of budget each year with cameras, so we look at where our greatest needs are and do our improvements in those areas. Perimeter fencing additions and enhancements are currently taking place. Schools have been upgraded to have access control at main entrances. We've always had some access control at all of our entrances, but we have enhanced those processes, particularly at four school sites. It's been enhanced at all sites, but particularly for, we have strengthened to a very high degree to make them equal to what is existing in our other sites.
So does that mean that our schools have, all of our schools now have, have to have approved access to gate entry?
Yes. Yes, that is a true statement. And you're on safety and security and I do appreciate Mr. Dodd serving on our safety and security committee. And so you are aware of which schools that is and it's made it more similar to what the other schools were. Okay.
So you mentioned arrows. Does it mean, do we have safety at all the high schools? Do we have football fields and stuff like that? So just bring that to your attention. I'm concerned about access through a football field, jump over fence.
Okay. We met with community leaders and we have identified and coordinated reunification sites with these. We've partnered with them. They have partnered with us to have reunification sites should the need arise. We have developed a continuity of operations plan and that will come to you all at a later board meeting for approval. This is in line with our emergency operations center. They have a master COOP plan and now we have a specific plan to the school district, what we would do in the event of needing to relocate some of our office spaces. We reorganized the risk management department to designate a school safety specialist that is dedicated to school safety. And that was mandated by Senate Bill 7026, that an administrator be designated as our school safety specialist. We are currently developing emergency and lockdown procedures for our district offices and for our boardroom personnel, and we will be conducting drills. We have streamlined the documentation of access control and security systems by site location. And this is really just a computer program that is put together so that we can better track the access control and the security systems by site. We also have coordinated efforts with the sheriff's office regarding the use of internal camera systems. And that was mainly an educational process, working with the folks at the sheriff's office who have access to monitor cameras and to make sure we're all on the same page and we all know what the capabilities are and how to utilize those should the need arise. The Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, as you know, that was developed and sent to us by the Department of Education. We had a very quick turnaround time. All of these reports were due to the Department of Education by tomorrow, August 1st. This is a 58-page document. We had to do a 58-page document for 23 different sites. And that included, part of this assessment included the safety checklist. So we worked, sheriff's office worked with us on that. School administrator and sheriff's office personnel did walk every campus. We did a safety checklist. We looked at areas that we wanted to strengthen. It also included a risk assessment of critical utilities at our sites. So I had assistance from Eric on that. Mr. Covino helped quite a bit. Also, food service, student services, these areas, transportation, they helped with this assessment as well. So it was, all 23 of them were sent to the Department of Education at about 9:40 this morning. Yes. We had two-thirds of the day to spare. But they have been completed. I feel like we've done a really good thorough job. Linda Buckingham was very helpful in the inputting of the information and they have been sent to the Department of Education. And information from that will be shared at a later board meeting, whenever we're able to share with you, according to Senate Bill 7026. We're also...
That was actually due August 1st, correct?
Yes. So I called and said, does that mean you need it by 4:00 today? Or do you need it by, or do I have tomorrow? And they said that they would like it today. So 9:40 this morning.
Great job.
As everyone here knows, we are in the process of trying to secure an agreement with the sheriff's office to provide one school resource officer at all school sites. So that's part of that mandate is that a school person, a school safety person armed needs to be assigned to all school sites within our district. So we are working to have that in place, something in place by August 13th. We have trained...
So I want to go back to the FSSAT for a Safe School Assessment Tool, right? So we all are, should be aware of that as far as dealing with the public asking questions. You know, it is a confidential tool because it identifies deficiencies. That is not allowed in public record right now. But there are questions that could come up in regards to what we are doing to better protect children on campuses. So I know Sherry alluded the fact that maybe once we find out what will come of this, because there is a question is, you know, parents have a right to know certain things. And we, so it's kind of a fine line there with what we can share and what we should be talking to them about. But yet, right now, it's a confidential survey. And obviously, we don't have that information yet as board members. But I think we will have that.
Senate Bill states that there are portions that we do need to share out.
Right. We're going to actually have to approve some of that information or approve some of that too, aren't we?
The document, I do clarify that. The document itself does not have to have approval at this point in time. But we share with you recommendations of improvements that need to be made and those recommendations for improvements need to be approved by the board, is my understanding so far.
And is any of that subject to the shade?
Well, that's the problem is that the statute says that you're supposed to do it on a public evening annually. I'm hoping that by, when I think of annually, that's sometime before June 30th of 2019, because that's the end of our school year. And hopefully, the legislature will fix that because they basically have mandated, you know, over and above the safety and security exemption for you to come and discuss these things in public. So I'm hoping that that's going to get...
So that said, and Mr. Dodd, would you agree with that assessment, that there's concerns with that information?
I agree that there's concerns, but I also agree that we have an obligation to make sure, you know, we're addressing the concerns and...
No, but to me, there's a balance there of that. And the reason I say that is, we are hoping the legislature will. But if the legislature is not made aware that there's a issue, we need to, we need to then make... And my point to that would be to then direct the chairman, if the board would agree to that, to say, we need to be talking to our legislators and there should be a, you know, there may need to be something that the chair, that we empower the chair to send a letter or, and communicate with our representative to say, these are some issues we need to address.
Well, the August 31st, let me get the timeline because the DOE has until August 31st to not approve the plan, but to examine the plans, right? And that's what's going to be used to help determine funding. Isn't that, isn't that correct?
It had, there is a statement in there that the monies for hardening will be driven by information in this tool, at least to some extent.
The worst, we have a priority, I would assume.
I'm not familiar with the August 31st deadline off the top of my head.
Okay. So eventually, the board's going to be made aware of these deficiencies because we should be looking to fix those deficiencies. But those deficiencies are going to be in a shade session. Wouldn't that be correct?
Mr. Bradshaw, I think so, yes.
And we're already on that. We're already fixing these deficiencies immediately, you know, as quickly as we can with maintenance.
But the issue, the issue really becomes too, with hardening money, at some point, intentional or non-intentional, if all of a sudden a school district receives an excessive amount of funding because they're considered part of a more at-risk need for hardening, the assumption's going to be, oh, my gosh, your district has a ton of deficiencies. I want to know, as a parent, what those are. And therein lies where there will be some challenges that we, you know... It's not an answer entirely that you all... be some challenges that we, you know, it, it's not an answer entirely that you all can answer for us. I think it's just something we need to, as you're saying, be aware of. That's going to happen, and, and I can guarantee, media's going to get a hold of that and say, Hillsborough County, just as an example, received X billions of dollars. And that's is going to be, I, I just do think that if they are, they, there continues to seem to be with all of these safety and concerns legislative fixes that need to happen. And I am just concerned to make sure that we communicate with our legislators, and that in some ways, we use all of us as a board to then say, Mr. Chairman, we need you to do, to, to communicate in a formal way that our, our board feels these need to be addressed. And, and again, it doesn't have to be a today conversation, but I do think we need to do that.
I agree.
Because time's coming. They're going to be meeting in committees, and we need to be consistent with that. And then if there's things we need to flow to FSBA along those same lines, we need to be communicating with that, and I can certainly facilitate that. But we need to be speaking as strongly, as rationally privately as we can.
Okay. We have trained 10 of our administrators to be Alice instructors. So Alice is, I don't know how much, I don't want to go into it, Mr. Bradshaw, but Alice is an enhanced lockdown procedure. It expands on, traditionally, we've had the code yellow, the code red, and this expands on that, has more options, it's research-based. So we did train 10 of our administrators who are now certified Alice instructors. And then the next thing says that we will be implementing Alice district-wide. So we had the Alice instructor training. We have now trained our administrators, or we have at least familiarized our administrators. There is going to be an e-learning tool that would be available to all staff and substitutes, and we'll make that available to you all, the board members as well. You'll get a welcome email and be able to participate in that e-learning tool. There will be face-to-face training with all of our staff prior to August 13th. Our 10 instructors are going to go out to all sites and do a face-to-face training as a follow-up to the fact that all of our staff will have seen the e-learning tool first. And then we do have a process for which we're going to give information to our, to parents because they may have questions. And then there will be a student training and practice piece to this as well. And then all district employees will be trained, our maintenance workers. Everyone in the district will receive this training, bus drivers. So we are...
Will that be then incorporated as to new staff training?
Yes.
From the staff side. So then the question is, what will we be doing for student and parent re, you know, communication of that on an annual basis? I think that's something we need to at least look to incorporate.
As new students enroll and as we have new hires, we will be training those folks as well. And it is a three-year process as far, as far as being an Alice-certified district. So there will be an e-learning tool next year, part two, for all staff members, and then a different variety of that for year three. So it will be ongoing training for everyone.
Let me mention, I was speaking similar about training, and they said that whatever you all come up with like Alice or anything else, to be able to present it to all employees which you're doing right now, is it also very important? You might present it the first time, but people forget things. Could you schedule it, like, on the calendar to have a review sometime during the year?
Everyone has access to this tool all year long. They can watch it at any point in time that they want a refresher. We can consider whether we want a mandatory refresher, but we are going to be having drills, and we will be, so they will be practicing this regularly throughout the year through our drills as well. We are also considering specific safety devices. We have enhanced the security measures here at the district office.
Now, I have some questions on safety devices, and so I didn't know if you wanted me to discuss those openly, or if, okay, so maybe we should finish your presentation, and we can go into a shade on the safety devices.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest.
Okay.
So that's what we do.
Again, we've enhanced some security measures here at the district services center. We select staff, I think there were six of us, attended an active shooter profiling training that was provided by FISBIT in Gainesville. That was a full-day training. Then on July 25th, we scheduled and had Phil Chalmers, who is quite well-known throughout the United States, to come and present his training, Identifying Common Characteristics of Violent Teens, to the staff listed here. And my apologies, it was an oversight, and I should have invited board members to this. It was quite intense, but again, I feel like I should have mentioned that to you all, that we were having that training. But it was very well-received by these folks that are listed, and we've gotten very good feedback, a lot of, a lot of positive comments on that training that they received. I think they were pleased that we were able to do that. We are in the process of coordinating school assessments with FIRE and EMS personnel. That's a requirement of Senate Bill 7026. It was not required for this first safety checklist that was due on August 1st, but every three years, they do need to be involved. So we're going to be having this checklist on an annual basis. And so the next time we do this, we're going to be asking FIRE and EMS to join us with this. We've made an initial contact. Greg has contacted both FIRE and EMS. They're very enthused about being part of the team and doing these assessments with us in the future. We have increased and enhanced the number of, we will increase and enhance the number of active shooter drills that we will be having on our campuses. We are currently waiting on the DOE to define hardening of schools, so we can find out what is meant by that and what needs to be done in that regard. And we're also waiting on DOE to release the educational facilities security grant application. We're told that there is one, and of course, as soon as it's released, we're going to fill that out to see what type of monies may be out there for us to do safety improvements on our campuses. Okay, that would be it.
Okay. Are there any questions in relation to what's been presented here before we go into the shade session? Anything from the searchers?
Can you share that with the sheriff's department?
On what in particular?
The jobs?
They were invited. Yes, we invited the supervisors of the SROs. Let me just mention about Alice, is that we have communicated that with the sheriff's office, and they are working in cooperation with us on that.
Okay. With that, I'm going to adjourn the workshop meeting, and we're going to convene a shade session of the board for safety reasons. Now, I think...